I'm Larry Marnatt, excuse my voice here. Dean of Basic Sciences of the School of Medicine. And I want to welcome you to our first town hall for graduate students. This, as I said, is the first and we're really happy to have you here. This reflects our desire to improve communication with the graduate student community. And so I hope you'll find the day, or it's not the day, but the hour worthwhile. So I'm going to give a few introductory remarks. And then Kathy Gould is going to talk about the results of the Director of Graduate Study, graduate student forums that were held this spring. Linda Sealy will talk about initiatives to improve the inclusive training environment. Roger Chalkley will talk about outcomes for the graduate programs. And then Kathy will talk a second time about an update on ASPIRE offerings for this year. So I think you all know that the chancellor is stepping down effective August 15th. And so Vice Provost Wentie will be both interim chancellor and provost from that point on. There is a search underway for a new chancellor. That search is being conducted, the search committee is the Board of Trust of the university. And Bruce Evans, who is the Chair of the Board of Trust and is really remarkable individual, extraordinarily dedicated to Vanderbilt and very capable, is leading that search. There is also a faculty, no, it's not a faculty, it's a chancellor's search advisory committee, which is comprised of some deans, faculty, and students. And so we, I'm on that committee. We've met a few times. We're trying to get input broadly from the community that will put into a report that will be given to the search committee in the early fall as they ramp up the search. There are five members of the search advisory committee who are also members of the search committee. And so we would like your input, that's why I'm bringing this up. So if you don't remember this link, just type in Vanderbilt Chancellor Search and you'll find this site. And there's a, there are five questions that they would like your answers to. This is an opportunity to have input into the selection of the new chancellor, at least give your advice about the kind of person that we should be looking for. They've gotten a lot of responses already. I think the community's really responded well to this. So I would encourage you to participate in the process. How many of you came in through the QCB? Wow, that's a good number. Good. So you were brought in by Hassan Masharab. And so Hassan is stepping down from his role as director of the QCB at the end of the summer. And so we've conducted a search for new leadership for the QCB. And I'm really pleased to announce that Tina Iverson in the pharmacology department will be the director and Vito Kuranta in biochemistry will be associate director. And this is a new collaborative leadership model for this program. Tina and Vito have different skill sets, they have different research interests. Tina is a structural biologist, Vito is a systems biologist, and I think that this is going to work really well for a program that is very interdisciplinary and very broad in nature. This is a slide from the web on, from Futurevu, which is an overall plan for the Vanderbilt campus. And one element of that plan is new housing for graduate students. And there's been talk about this for a couple of years. They've been doing a lot of inspections of graduate student housing at other institutions. And so they just announced a couple of weeks ago that they've signed with the company that's going to build the facility. This is part of a long-term plan to have three units for graduate student housing, which will in total house about 2,000 graduate students. We've got about 6,000 graduate students on campus. So about a third of the graduate community could come in to this, into the facility. So the first unit will start this, later this fall. This is one for 600, it'll be 600 beds. It's a kind of a variety of design, variety of different kinds of rooms. There'll also be some commercial properties on the, on the first level of the facility. It'll be down near the old Nashville, right around Broadway, down by the Ayrton Hotel. Just past that, on the other side of the street, is where this is initially planned for. So be on the lookout. This will be going up like many of the other cranes in Nashville in the near future. I wanted to update us just a little bit on facilities. We've made some really major investments in infrastructure over the last couple of years. The first of these is, is our investment in cryo EM. I don't know how many of you have been down to the Engineering and Science Building to see the Creos. Has anybody seen it down there? Not yet. So you should go down. It's, it's in the basement of ESB, which is a, is a very, an ultra-low vibration, high base space for major instruments like this. This is a behemoth of an instrument. So it's 13 and a half feet tall. If you open it up, it's got lots of wires, as you would expect. It cost $8 million. It cost us $1 million just to build out the room that it's in, so that it's very highly shielded. And this provides structural information at high resolution, atomic resolution on complexes. And we're adapting the facility, there's actually a focused ion beam scanning electron microscope right next to it. We're going to put a cryo stage on it, which will enable us to do cryoelectroentomography, which provides the opportunity to do high-resolution structure determination in intact cells. It's really very, very exciting. And we're also planning to be building out the rest of this pit down here to expand the facility for cryo EM and cryo ET. And because we've made this investment, we've recruited two new faculty members, Will Wan and QJ Zhao in biochemistry and cell and developmental biology. Both came in in joint searches with Centers, the Center for Structural Biology and the Vanderbilt Brain Institute. Both, especially Will, our expert in cryoelectroentomography. Will trained in the Baumeister Laboratory in Munich at the Max Planck, which is where a lot of the technology developed. QJ is coming from Stanford. And we're very excited to have them joining us. Will has actually determined the structure of a protein at three angstrom resolution in an intact cell. It's, it's the future of cell biology, according to Ian McCarr. So we've also haven't forgotten our X-ray colleagues. So there's been an investment in a new metal jet X-ray source. This is on the eighth floor of the Robinson Research Building. The metal jet sources are nearly as bright as synchrotron. So you get synchrotron quality resolution here locally. So there's only five of these instruments in the United States and this one is available now. It's in operation. It seems we're always buying some new mass specs, or at least Dr. Caprioli is negotiating them with a vendor. And so here are five new ones that have appeared in the mass spec facility over the last year or two. This particular one, this Tim's Time of Flight, is the only instrument in the world of its kind. This Waters G2XS is, is one of these workflow HD exchange instruments. So it's, it's set up to be almost automated, for those of you doing hydrogen-deuterium exchange. Two new orbit traps, the thermo Q exactives. And then this, this seems, I do a lot of mass spec, but this seems pretty amazing to me that this can acquire 10,000 spectra per second. But one can only imagine the data that that generates. We have multiple light sheet microscopes that have been either built or bought. So the images on the left are from the lattice light sheet microscope that was, where are we here? This isn't going to make it. Ah, there we go. So this, this image is the lattice light sheet microscope that was built jointly by Anita Mahadav and Jansen and Matt Tiska. And this has a light sheet, but it generates it in a way that it, you can take very long time lapse images without damaging the cells. So you can go for very long times watching molecules move around. This is a more traditional light sheet microscope. This is in Rich Simmerly's lab. We've just gotten a Noga that we have, one of these going into the scissor core as well. And here, looking at the, the distribution of TrkA in mouse embryo. And so Rich is doing a lot of neuronal imaging and has a neuroimaging core that he's putting together. And then not so much instrumentation, but methodology. The transgenic core, embryonic stem cell core, has done a complete pivot and is now using CRISPR technology for genome editing. And they have a very high hit rate in generating knockout mice and mice where genomes have been edited to incorporate additional functionality or mutations. It's, they're so good that even my lab, which is a chemistry lab essentially, was able to generate a couple of different knockout animals with the assistance of the core. We've been improving our communications, we hope. This is our new website for the basic sciences. We hope it's much easier to navigate than the old one was. There's a lot of really good information up here. So just Google Vanderbilt Basic Sciences and, and look through what's there for you. We're developing a broader presence in social media. So our Director of Communications, Lorena Infante Lara, who was a graduate student herself not too long ago, just got her PhD in biochemistry with Neil Oshirov, is assembling and editing our monthly newsletter, basically speaking, and then runs our Twitter account and our Instagram account. And in particular, the Instagram account is there to deposit really nice images from your research. So we encourage you, as you generate data that you really like to share with others, to, to put it up there. And then that gets incorporated to other things that we're doing. Okay? What about investments in you? So these, I should mention, these are all new investments over the last couple of years that have been enabled by the chancellor's endowment for graduate education and research, which is, will eventually be about a $300 million endowment. About 100 million of that goes directly to graduate students for programs that are discretionary within each of the schools. We've used the money that we've gotten so far to invest in Russell G. Hamilton scholarships. So these are recruiting scholarships for incoming graduate students. We just found out that, that our hit rate for this year, we offered 14 of these and 13 of them were accepted. That may be a single data point, but it suggests that these have been useful in identifying very good students. We've also established the dean's award for exceptional achievement. And this is to reward students for their performance in graduate school, which is different than a lot of the graduate recruiting fellowships, which reward students for what they've done as undergraduates. So this is a competitive process. These were our first year's winners. We are just about to announce the second year's winner. 11 fellowships or stipends have been given. So these is, this is a two-year, $5,000 salary stipend given to third-year graduate students for their fourth year and their fifth year in graduate school. We put quite a bit of support into international students. We've recruited international students for a number of years, but now part of the program is that we provide a second year of stipend and tuition for international graduate students, which helps them get into laboratories since they're not able to get on training grants. And so we're committing about $1 million a year to the recruitment of, and support of international graduate students. Kathy's going to talk a lot about this, but all I wanted to say, that the ASPIRE program is just a phenomenal career development program to help all of you identify career options early in graduate school, so that you can target your, your training toward that career. This is one of the really very best programs in the country. And part of the reason is that we got a big investment from the NIH a few years ago that we used to hire people to build up the kind of programs that you now have available to you. Well, that grant ended, and so because of the support from the chancellor's endowment, we were able to pick up the salaries and the, and the operating costs of everybody in the office. So that, we were, we didn't have to lose any of the talent that we had recruited through the, the best consortium. And among the many, many workshops, there, there's a new seminar series, EI2, which is Enabling Innovation Seminar. And this is really designed for people who are interested in entrepreneurial activities, maybe startup activities after you get out of graduate school. We're also doing some partnerships with Launch Tennessee on things like SBIR and STTR resources. And then finally, there's Lunch with the Deans. So this is a new program. I see a couple of people that we've lunched with. So on a monthly basis, Linda Sealy and I are meeting with about 10 to 12 graduate students. And there's, there's no agenda. We just want to get together and talk and find out what you like, what you don't like, what you're thinking about, what's going on in your lives. It's, it's been a lot of fun for me in the first couple of these. And we're going to continue to do them. So if you get invited, we hope you'll agree to, to join us. So that was it for me. I'll turn it over to Kathy now to talk about the DGS graduate student forums.
Unfortunately, this microphone really doesn't work for you guys, so that's why we're coming out here. Can you hear me from here? Okay. So what I've been asked to talk about is sort of the results of student forums that were held last spring. So as you might remember, or know, a report was issued from National Academy of Sciences last year about harassment in the workplace, especially concerning sexual harassment in STEM. And we had hosted here at Vanderbilt, two of the people involved in putting the report together, that was the study director, Frasier Benya, and a member of the committee, Vicki Magley. And so they came and talked about what the, what was in the report. So if you haven't had a chance to read the report and want to, you can download it. It is a book, it's very long, but they summarized for us what their findings were, and then also provided recommendations for moving forward and eliminating the problems that they had found. And one of the recommendations of this study group was to take action to mitigate the power differential between graduate students and their thesis advisor. And because of this recommendation, we wanted to know your suggestions of how this could be achieved here at Vanderbilt. And so Linda Sealy organized the three forums that you were all invited to attend. And I see many of the people in the audience did attend one of the three sessions, but you didn't attend all of them. And I took the notes, so I was tasked with summarizing this and putting it into categories that we can actually take action on. Okay? So also, including to, in addition to the students, we also invited the directors of graduate study. And I, I think that all of the directors of graduate study attended one or another session, depending on their schedule. Okay, so I can't quite read this unless I come forward. But these are recommendations that can be addressed at the level of the DGS or the chairs of departments and so forth. It doesn't have to be taken to any higher level. And the first that was common among all three groups was to form a group of faculty mentors willing to talk to students from other departments about a variety of, of issues. To improve the mentoring of second-year students, this is because it was felt that first-year students have a lot of mentoring through impact groups, but in the second year, they have not yet formed a thesis committee to provide the mentoring. And so we have to do something about that gap in mentoring. The groups also thought that thesis committee performance could be improved. There was a recommendation that the individual development plan be actually reviewed by the thesis committee in addition to the mentor. Some programs already do this, other programs do not. There was also the recommendation that we should change the training emphasis from paper completion to actually providing evidence of growing scientific independence and competence. There were also a set of recommendations that the DGSSs cannot act on. And that was to develop consequences to faculty for exhibiting a pattern of incivility and harassment of students and other colleagues that is below legally actionable threshold. To develop an anonymous reporting mechanism for incidents of incivility and harassment below, again, the legal threshold. To do something about prevention, that is, training for faculty, staff, post-docs, students in culturally aware mentoring, unconscious bias, and providing bystander training. There was a recommendation to provide independent funding to graduate students. The corollary there would be to develop fund to support students on a temporary basis if they chose to switch groups. And finally, to reveal the results of the climate survey. So these were all recommendations coming from the students. And I just should say that all, many of these, we're actually working on. We don't have definitive plans right now, we can't really share with you, but we're taking action on all of these recommendations. And that's all for this. Part of the presentation. We're going to have questions after everyone's presentation is over. Just wanted to clarify that. Do you have to wear this? Right here. Put it on your shoulder. Or? Yeah, put it on the side. I just want to really go on my lapel. Backwards. There. Okay, I got it now. All right. So I wanted to start today by just sharing with you a few words about my mission as the dean for diversity, equity, and inclusion in the basic sciences. And for graduate students, our diversity is actually pretty strong. So primarily, my mission is to create a more inclusive training environment for our students. So this is not an easy goal. It's going to take time, a lot of hard work. And there's really no roadmap for how to do this. So I wanted to let you know a couple of things that govern my approach to doing this. And the first one is that it is conversations that change our culture. So we need to get better at having these critical conversations. And also, that creating an inclusive culture is really a community responsibility. We need everyone's involvement, faculty, post-docs, staff, and you, our students. So because faculty play a key role in the culture of their lab, I've started with faculty. And about two years ago, in the fall of 2017, I initiated culturally aware mentoring workshops with the support of Larry, our dean. So what is culturally aware mentor training that hopefully some of your PIs have participated in? Basically, it is a workshop that covers the fundamentals of best mentoring practice. And by the way, mentor training has become a priority at the NIH for funding things like our training grants and fellowships. So this is very timely. But also, this workshop provides opportunities to interweave training about mentoring with faculty having opportunities to have some self-reflective dialogue in small groups about race and ethnicity and how they influence your training experiences. The workshops, we've had three of them so far, are facilitated by two national experts, Chris Fund and Angela Byers Winston, who have both been funded by the National Research Mentoring Network to develop these curriculums. And our training is basically a customized training here at Vanderbilt, it's a hybrid of their curriculums. So real briefly, just to give you a sense of what these workshops are like, it's a two-day workshop. And we start out from the very beginning by taking, taking a culturally aware lens to research mentor training. The faculty have to bring in a culture box, which has a couple of items that are salient to their cultural identity. And the idea here is that we all have a cultural identity and we need to share it reciprocally. So that sort of sets the tone for the day. And then we move into things like stereotype threat, microaggressions, bias, and so on. There's opportunities on day two to talk about what it's like to be an only. And this is really broader than racial, ethnic. So maybe you're the only person who's an international student from your country, or the only person who has your gender or sexual identity, or whatever. We do this as well as covering things that are in blue, which are your sort of standard mentoring competencies. There's actually homework between the two days where you have to view a module on racial discrimination and civil rights in this country, which we talk about on day two. So as part of this initiative, we want to know if this is actually effective. So at the same time as developing the workshop initiative, we also developed a survey. This is the Graduate Student Culture and Climate Survey that hopefully many of you have taken. And we started this in 2017 as a baseline, before we did any mentor workshops. In our first year, we had 106 students participate. And we also repeated the survey last fall and we doubled our participation to a little over 200 students. So these are the questions that we ask on mentoring satisfaction. And I think one of the really good things is that a lot of students rated your mentor excellent or good on things like providing scientific advice, setting aside time to meet with you, encouraging your independence and creativity, developing confidence in your ability to do research. And we did see some areas where we weren't as strong, such as setting reasonable goals and expectations, or communicating those goals and expectations. So these are areas that we know we need to work on. One of the areas that scored lower in the baseline survey, the blue bars here, is mentoring across cultural differences. And it was really a great thing to see that in our second year, after a couple of workshops, this had improved to almost 90%. So whether this is a direct effect of the mentoring workshops or an indirect effect of the mentoring workshops, clearly, we're moving in the right direction on this one. These are the rest of the mentoring satisfaction questions. And again, we see some areas where we are not as strong as we would like to be. Discussing how your racial, ethnic, or gender identity influences your training was the lowest and went up a little bit after some workshops. Navigating program requirements is also a little bit on the low side. Encouraging a work, a healthy work-life balance was not one of our strongest areas. And I want to show you that we actually broke down the data a little bit more to separate the responses by gender and by underrepresented minority status. And so you can take a category like this and ask And so you can take a category like this and ask if everyone has the same sense of satisfaction about this, and the answer is no. So this is our baseline data from 2017, and these are the responses of the group of all of you. And then we looked at whether there were differences between women and men, or between underrepresented and non-underrepresented students. So for example, if women were more satisfied with a category, then the difference that's graphed here would be on the right. And if they were less satisfied, it would be negative, and the difference would be on the left here. And so you can see we had some differences. Particularly, for example, underrepresented students were less likely to rate their mentor as good or excellent in encouraging their healthy work-life balance, and similarly, navigating graduate program requirements. We saw differences by gender, although none of these really met the level of statistical significance. But when we looked at these differences a year later, after implementing some of our workshops on culturally aware mentoring, if you compare the blue bars that were from our baseline with the survey a year later, you see that these blue bars have definitely decreased or disappeared significantly. And we saw similar progress, if you will, by gender. So we think that we are on the right track with these culturally aware mentoring workshops, and we're really excited to see if the data in the future continues to show progress and improve even further. Now, I mentioned that inclusion is a community responsibility. So we have also launched some initiatives for PhD trainees and post-docs. This summer, we launched a workshop that's actually a video game workshop. It was developed by a group of scientists also at Wisconsin. And even though you think about video games as being something you do for fun or entertainment, there's actually a whole genre of video games that address serious subjects, such as, in this case, bias in academia, which is a very serious subject. And we had this group come, and some of you hopefully attended. The video game is about a fictional character called Jamal. He is an African-American student starting graduate school, and you follow him through his experiences in graduate school and his career, and experience the biases and stereotypes that he has to deal with, and therefore, it's a biased literacy learning tool for individuals. We had really positive feedback about this workshop. This is some of it here, that it was phenomenal, it was great, and so on. And so we're thinking about how we want to use this video game workshop in the future in a survey, a post-workshop survey. Ninety-two of the participants in the morning agreed, or strongly agreed, that they would recommend this workshop to a colleague, and it was 100% in the afternoon. So you will probably be seeing more opportunities to participate in this workshop in the future. Another thing that we did, which Kathy mentioned, was we invited the study directors of the National Academy's Study on Sexual Harassment of Women in STEM to the campus last fall. I hope a lot of you were able to attend the presentations by Frasier. And Vicky also came along. She is an expert on incivility in the workplace. And, you know, whether you have had time to read the entire report or not, these are the key points. And I think this report was groundbreaking in the assessment that gender harassment, which is the sexism, the comments that diminish women, like, you don't have very good ability in math, or you're not as serious about science because you have to pick your child up from daycare at 5:00. These are by far the most common form of sexual harassment, and they do drive women out of science. And in fact, it is actually the organizational climate that is the most important factor in determining the prevalence of sexual harassment and gender harassment in the workplace. That when women experience gender and sexual harassment, our least common response is to report it. And finally, sexual harassment training, particularly online training, is not effective in changing behavior. So what do we do about this? And these are the top five recommendations from the report. First of all is to create a diverse, inclusive, and respectful environment. And that is, as I told you, my major mission, but I need your help as well. We need to address gender harassment in the workplace, and I'm going to have more to say about that in a moment. We need to address our culture and climate. That sort of reinforces the recommendation of number one. We need to improve transparency and accountability. And so this town hall today is a step in being more transparent. We've had the new lunches with the deans. We had the get-togethers between students and directors of graduate studies to talk to you about these issues. And of course, diffusing the hierarchical independent relationship was the topic of those discussions, and we definitely plan to work on all of your suggestions. But in terms of addressing gender harassment, one thing that we need to do is report it so that it can be addressed. And I want to emphasize to you that you can report gender harassment anonymously through Project Safe. Now, I know that if you go to the Project Safe hotline, or if you look at their handouts, it seems as though Project Safe is more about sexual misconduct, sexual assault, sexual violence. But in fact, with the new definition that gender harassment is sexual harassment, they do want you to report gender harassment to them. I actually had a meeting with Cara Tuttle Bell yesterday, and they are working on changing their website to make that more clear. So right now, I want everybody to get out their phone. And I want you to put this number in your phone. It's the Project Safe hotline, so that you have it if you need to use it. Reminder, it is a confidential resource. Title IX student, Title IX is not confidential. This is a confidential resource. So you can connect with them. And Cara Tuttle Bell is the individual who typically handles the contacts that come in from graduate and professional students. So if you don't talk to her, you can ask for her. She wants to talk to you if you have issues with gender harassment that you want to report. Yes?
The number's on the back of your ID card.
Okay, but a lot of times, you might not have your ID, but you always have your phone. Does anybody not have their phone? So now you have the number in your phone. You are able to report gender harassment, and that will help us to understand the prevalence. It is an anonymous report. So I'm going to turn it over to Roger next.
Okay, I hope you can hear me back there, but it's picking up. Great. So I would like to give you a somewhat optimistic point of view. And so the first thing, before I show you just two or three slides, is to tell you a little bit about a report that we construct from a survey that is participated in by about 95% of the students who graduate from the basic biomedical sciences here. And we get a lot of information from this report, but there are three things, I think, that are very important. One of the questions was, would you, if you had your time over again, would you come back to this university for your PhD studies? 93% of the respondents, and remember, a large proportion of the students, responded yes. Next question was, would you go to the same department again? And 87% of the respondents said, yes, they would go to the same department. And the final question is, would you go to the same advisor again? And 84% said, yes, they would. So that's great. There's just one small problem in that. If 84% say yes, then that 16% are saying no. And I think it's the 16% that we really need to focus on. And then what has happened over this last summer is I have been interacting with a number of students who have started off, not a rotation, but a work in the laboratory, and things so far as the mentoring interactions are just not going right. And eventually, just not going right goes beyond being very easily salvageable, and so the students would like to get out. One of the problems, though, is, and I think we really mentioned this in Impact, but we're not doing a very good job at mentioning, is it is possible to transfer from one mentor to another. And when I would say, well, have you thought about that? Then there's the difficulty of finding another mentor. There is the notion that the mentor might say, oh, I say, not getting on very well in this lab, then maybe there are problems. And the biggest concern, and that's what I'm going to be addressing, is, yeah, but I've been here three years. It's going to really add on to my time to degree. I might as well leave, go somewhere else, or do something else. And so there's perfectly good candidate for a PhD who's making a decision not to stay, but to go on. The point of my conversation this afternoon is, I'm not encouraging people to move around, but I'm just telling you that it's not that difficult. There are systems whereby you can move, and I'm going to give you data to show it's not going to hurt you in the long run in terms of adding years and years to the time to degree. So let's start by looking at the time to degree. There we go. So as I mentioned, we've been collecting data for a long time. And here you see one of the results from that collection going out to last year. And this shows the time to degree. And it has bounced around a little, but not very much. And in essence, what you can see is that average line, the dotted line, that's 5.7 years. And so there is your average for all of your colleagues, and I suppose, a good predictor for yourselves for the future. And so this is what we're concerned about. If we have to relocate to another lab, are we going to see this changing a very great So what information do we have on changing labs? First of all, how many people change labs? And it's just the barest tad. Over 10% of the students in each year will change a lab. And as you can see from the second bullet point, it does take a little bit longer. You've got to get reoriented to the new lab, but you're coming in rather sophisticated, already well-trained. The bulk of students who change labs, it's probably a little into the second year, so fairly quick. But we have had students change labs out for four years into the process. And the average time is six months longer for the time to defend, but even after four years, only about nine months. So you're able to use your accumulated skills and wisdom in that way. Reasons for switching, personality conflicts, they were the ones that I was talking about earlier on. The PI, some people switch because the PI has left Vanderbilt. If your PI were to leave Vanderbilt, you have a choice. You can go with the PI, and the PI and the institution that he or she is going to is very anxious to make that a very pleasant experience. Sometimes, because of personal reasons or inclination, a student may not want to transfer to another institution at the other end of the world, and so they stay, but then they're going to have to change labs. And of course, the other possibility is the death of the PI. It does happen, so try and avoid going with somebody who's going to die in the immediate So the other aspect of this is how many people, in fact, I hate the word, the phrase, "master out" or "just quit." And what information have we got on this? So this is a study of both IGP and QCB, going back to, for the IGP, to the year 2000. And then as far as QCB is concerned, that whole process leading towards CDP is, only got started in 2001. So you can see what happens to most students who go into the, come into the graduate programs by these vehicles is, oh, damn. Let me get my pointer to this one. Most people graduate. That you see here. So this is IGP, early on, IGP out to 2012. And we took to 2012, because if you came in 2012, most of the individuals who came in at that time have now, in fact, graduated. And this brown color shows for these, the kids who are still, people who are still here. If you go to QCB, you see a small number of students also are here. The ones that I think we're interested in so far as not staying is not so much those who've completed the degree, but those who earned a master's degree, or didn't earn a degree at all, they just left. And I think this transition is most dramatically seen for QCB. So in the early days of QCB, there were almost 20% would leave and just simply leave. They did not get any degree at all. That had changed quite substantially, where you go on to the individuals from '07 to '12, you see the number of individuals that simply leave is now quite small, less than 5%. And the number who at least take a master's degree has gone on to 17.6%. Unfortunately, we were not analyzing the situation of those individuals who left without a PhD. The reason is, they tend to leave at different times during the year, and we don't find out about it in the bread office until somewhat later, and they've already gone, so we can't go through the questionnaires. So for those who do finish, here's a reflection of the plans after defense. So these are individuals, they graduated, and you can see in purple, these folks are going on and doing a postdoc. And if you look down here, the undecideds and the others is pretty small. And I think that reflects the education that students are given in order to analyze what they're going to do next. I think the important part of this is that in green, you see there are a number who are seeking a postdoc or employment. There has been a rather significant change in the way people complete the degree here. And it's not just at Vanderbilt, this is countrywide. It is really hard to publish a paper these days. You probably know that. There's a lot of changes. People almost ask you to write five papers on top of the one you're submitting in order to get it accepted. And that takes time. And so if you submit a manuscript, and you're getting very productive in that last six months of your career, so, I mean, we know there is this pressure of, you've got to get it first off, the paper. But separate from that is that you and your advisor may want to get a couple of other papers, and if you've been lucky and the work's going well, then you're going to be in that position towards the end. You defend your thesis, you've submitted these extra papers, and what do you and your advisor want to do at that time? Well, increasingly, students will say, I would like to hang on for an extra two or three months in order to respond to any requirements for changes and modifications, because you may be the only person in the lab who can actually handle that. So we see that in these individuals here. The ones who are seeking postdoc or employment, it's not that they're sloppy about it or have deferred it, it's just that it's become part of the process to hold off while you and your advisor finish that off. And I think the actual number that are going to do a postdoc probably is some of these and these. As this is going down, then this tends to be going up. My guess is the overall take, and the point I want to mention for you all, is that, for you, about 70% of your class will do a postdoc. Significant number of that 70% will only stay for a relatively short time. The half-life for the bulk of the class is about 2.3, 2.4 years. And those individuals tend to be not interested in academic career. They're looking at something else. They get some of the training from a postdoc, they're ready to go. If you want an academic career, you've got to have a battery of papers indicating how creative and imaginative you are, and going back to the original... And going back to the original discussion, that takes time. And so that's where people end up staying, four, five, even six years in the postdoc. They're getting the armamentarium to be able to be competitive for a position in academia. And then finally, the last slide. This shows where you will go. And if we look at this over the years, it doesn't change too much. There have been some changes, and there's considerable amount of creativity in terms of the types of career that people will go for. But I just draw your attention to the fact that there are about, oh, what is it? 20, 24%, I think the number is, it's cutting off here for some reason. About 24% of individuals will go into academia. But that could be tenure track, it could be a teaching four-year college, and it could be a non-tenure track at a Research One institution. Staff scientists might be helping with something like cause or something like that. Still, some people in postdocs, even after 2014, they're finishing off there. And then you can see that industry is taking about, ooh, 15%. And then the government or nonprofit labs taking about 12 or 13% here. And then you have additional positions out here. These are in the range of the varied number of types of different careers that have now become perfectly acceptable for graduate students to move towards. In general, when people are reviewing training grants, they just want to know, not are all your products of the training grant becoming copies of yourself? Are they all tenure-track faculty at Research One institution? Because only 14% will get to that particular position. But the question they're asking for a good outcome in a training grant is, are you in science? Are you contributing towards the overall national science activity? And that's the end of my presentation.
All right, I just have a couple slides of update to the ASPIRE program. Okay, so have all of you heard of the ASPIRE Cafe for postdocs? Yeah. Well, now, we're going to have the ASPIRE Bistro for PhD students, okay? So you know that over the course of the six years, the group has developed a number of professional development sessions and training sessions. And some of these, we were given to student groups, even courses, training grant groups. Anyway, we were getting spread really, really thin. And so we decided that we would pull the common sessions out that were appropriate for graduate students into the bistro. And then we pulled some of the sessions out of the cafe and added them to some other things for a new series, a second new series that's called the Job Search Series. And this is for both students and postdocs, okay? So we're going to continue to have a postdoc-only, we're going to add a PhD-student-only session, series, and then we're going to combine postdocs and students into a series specifically on this. So what is in these? So this is the bistro topics. And these are the Job Search Series topics. We've sort of thought about what training stage these are appropriate for. And because different graduate programs are a little bit different in when they're training their students, we're just calling them for, you know, all students would be appropriate for certain sessions, and then early students or late students in their late training stages, okay? Does that make sense? Yeah, okay. And that's the same with the Job Search Series for both the students and the postdocs to break that out. So these are the dates that they're going to be given. And what's in common is we're doing a session for either students, postdocs, or both, every Wednesday afternoon at 2:00. I know we can never hit a time that's perfect for everybody all the time. But this avoids the greatest number of conflicts that we can tell, okay? And so we hope that you'll participate in them. All of this, obviously, you don't have to write this down. We've talked to the, all the representatives of your programs, and so they should be communicating this to you. The DGSSs will be communicating this to you. And of course, this will be on our web, on the emails that you get every couple of weeks and so forth. So hopefully, you won't miss anything. We're also going to start a new, you know, opt-in sort of Twitter thing so that we can just give you a message on the day of the event so that you won't forget to come. And I think that's all I wanted to say about ASPIRE today. And we are done and happy to take any questions on anything that we've talked about.
Well, I have to get the answer.
So a lot of the mentoring and like resources that are available kind of are vulnerable to the idea of like a selection bias of someone who's seeking out the diversity training is already kind of interested in diversity training. Is there an idea that these are going to remain voluntary or become mandatory for either students and/or faculty?
Can you repeat the question for that?
Okay, you want to repeat the question? Will the, I think the question was, will the training for faculty become mandatory? I can actually even handle that one. So because it will be mandatory to be listed as a mentor on a training grant, it will essentially be mandatory. I think that, we'll put it succinctly, okay? But I think we find that the vast majority of the faculty are very interested in this and are doing it voluntarily.
Tell them about 30%.
Yeah, there's a couple of other aspects to your question. One is that if you want to create change, say, in climate or culture, there is some literature which suggests that you only need to train about 30% of the, say, faculty or students. And then it starts to sort of spread on its own. And that's because, you know, if you're going to have, let's say, a student committee meeting, the likelihood that there's a faculty member on the committee who's been through this training and will steer the conversation in various ways is likely. And also, there is some literature which suggests that having mandatory trainings can backfire. If someone isn't really receptive to the message, then they may go to the training, but really not benefit from it in any way. But then, they justify their bad behavior by saying, well, I went to that training, so now I can do whatever, and it's okay because I went to the training. So, you know, for example, now I'm not a racist or something like that because I went to this training. So, and actually, Melissa Thomas-Hunt, who was our vice provost for inclusive excellence until recently, that was her research area, was how mandatory training doesn't actually work as well as you might think. I have actually a question that was submitted ahead of time. So we had that option in case you wanted to submit a question anonymously. And we did have someone do that. And the question was, what progress has been made towards developing an online system for graduate students to report harassment? So there is an online system, and I can send out the link, and you can report harassment. However, it is not confidential. So if you use it, it will end up in an office like Student Title IX, and it's not going to be confidential. So that's why I wanted to let you all know about the fact that you can report harassment at Project Safe, and you now all have that number in your phone.
I have a question, but are you going to give more facilities open to biomedical graduate students in ESKIN, such as the student lounge or some of the classroom spaces? Since for our first year, we had a room like Hall, which we realized was a group studying after IGP was a great way to make our class unique. And then that room is now no longer available. And we were recently kicked out of the ESKIN room, which was supposed to be the which going to, like, the ceiling's trying to do it, make it an inclusive environment.
Right.
It's not very included in the School of Medicine.
Well, I, I don't feel very included over there either. I can, I can read the signs just like everybody else who goes into that library. So we are working at the moment in the building that we actually do own, and that is this one. And so there are plans underway, which are pretty far advanced, to redo, I know that. I don't want to use the microphone. There are plans underway to redo the fourth, fifth, and sixth floors of this building to make them the kind of lounges where students can go and either brainstorm research ideas or just have a quiet place to hang out together. And that's going to also happen on the eighth floor, but that will be more focused for neuroscience. But on the fourth, fifth, and sixth floor, they'll be, those will be open for any graduate students or any postdocs or anybody else who wants to go there. I will say that some of you may have heard that there's been evaluation of science space in the university with the idea of trying to plan for the future. And that space evaluation was done by an external consulting firm. And it was done jointly with the basic sciences, arts and sciences, and engineering. And one of the things that came out of that is that there are some common needs for graduate student space in the first year especially, among the three schools. And so one of the things that we've talked about is perhaps having shared space. For example, there's going to probably be a lot of renovation of the Stevenson Center complex, which is immediately adjacent to this building and not far away from Light Hall, for example. And so one of the things we've talked about is, is building out some space that would be dedicated for graduate students. Kind of a long answer.
On that base, what efforts are being made on dedicating some of that space specifically for underrepresented students?
Right, yeah, thanks for asking that question. So that's something that we'd like to do jointly across the School of Medicine. And so I've spoken to Jennifer Peet and Paul about getting space as well that could be joint between, joint for students who are in either BU Labs or VUMC Labs. It would be convenient for students with underrepresented backgrounds who wanted to go there. Linda and I had talked about some space that was available in Med Center North earlier this year, eventually decided not to do that, but it's on our radar screen for sure. Other questions?
So there's a huge amount of space available for anybody who wants to use it. The only problem with this huge amount of space, which is at the moment heavily air-conditioned, is that I don't know how long it will be available. But I'm guessing for probably a year and a half, since the hospital's not very flush right now, it was going to be renovated in the third floor of Light Hall just across from the Brad Office, there's that ginormous student lounge. It's completely open. If you want to use it for the time, you just flash your card. The only issue is, I don't know when they'll want to renovate it. But everything I'm hearing now is not in the next year and a half. So if you need it, go sit in there.
Other questions? Yes?
So regarding the actionable items for the DGSS based on the survey results for the students, I was wanting to clarify, you said all of them would be worked on, but some of them are not, that DGSS should address. So how is it being addressed? Who is being addressed?
They're being addressed at the dean's level. Sorry, these are being addressed by the deans, at the dean's level. Sorry. For the actionable items that can't be addressed at the level of the Directors of Graduate Study, they're being addressed at the dean and chair level.
Let me just add that sometimes things take a little longer than one might hope because it's got to be socialized among a number of different constituencies. But we are moving.
One of the actionable items that was listed was kind of trying to have committees kind of measure students ready for graduation less by publications and/or by that they've kind of sort of be more independent and capable. So what, how exactly will that be handled? What is happening?
So to repeat the question, the actionable item on measuring progress towards PhD, how is that going to be done? So there's a number of working groups that are looking at what are competencies and how can they be measured? And working in small groups and some bigger groups to actually put together some ratings, you know, and to agree on them across different faculty and different programs. And you can imagine that this will take a while. But that is the idea. So you have the SACS forms that evaluate progress or competency in a variety of different areas, but to get a little bit more granular in those. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Yes?
So the Chancellor's Endowment for Graduate Education, such as that, is going to be about $300 million.
That's right.
Scholarships going towards, award, or awards for current grad students and international students. What else is that going towards? And is that towards creating first name inclusion?
So the endowment, the Chancellor's endowment will eventually be $300 million. So the question was about how is that money being used? And so let me give you just a little bit of background on that. And the reason that the Chancellor is creating the endowment, which is coming in over about a five-to-six-year period, so it's building up in the Vanderbilt endowment. So the Vanderbilt endowment right now is about $6.5 billion. And about a billion of that is targeted for undergraduate education in one way or another, mainly fellowships, things like that. The amount of money in the endowment targeted for graduate education is $40 million. 4% of the amount for undergraduates. And I think that it reflects the fact that people identify a lot with their undergraduate education or the institution, and that's where their passion for giving is. And also, there's a sense that universities or institutions should pay for graduate education. And so the Chancellor felt that as part of a capital campaign that we're about to go into, that he wanted to jumpstart giving for graduate education. And so that's why he created it. It was completely his own initiative. It's built in, it's building in over, as I said, about a five-to-six-year period. So there are four buckets for that. One bucket is the Hamilton Scholarships, which provides money for these first-year scholarships. And then in addition, can be used for discretionary purposes. And that, probably around $100 million is going to be dedicated for that. And so that is what all of the uses that I showed up there that we've made of this is, is coming from that, the contribution to the basic sciences. And even though it's just coming to the basic sciences, we're making it available to every graduate student regardless of what laboratory they work in. We've also created as part of that the Lou Di Felice Travel Awards. Now, that's for undergraduates. Now, that's for undergraduates, so it's for undergraduate and faculty mentors to attend things like, meetings like ABRCAMS or SACNES, which are the major minority kind of undergraduate scientific meetings. That's probably the major targeted thing that we've done so far in the diversity area. Now, if we go to the other proposed uses, a component, probably around $50 million, is being used for endowed chairs at a variety of levels, and those are matches where the chancellor and the donor will have a 50/50 contribution for an endowed chair, either at the full professor level, associate professor, or assistant professor. And those can be used to foster diversity for sure in terms of recruiting a more diverse faculty, and we have certainly used them in that way, and retaining a more diverse faculty. Right now, I think the biggest bucket will be the international, the global studies kind of bucket, and that's a really broad range of things that it will be used for. One of the things, you know, the tower is, Carmichael Tower's going down on Saturday at, what, 9:00? Are you all going to watch when it happens? And so you know that there's another residential college going down, West End right next to it, right across from 2525. The signature architectural element of that will be an 18-story tower, which will contain apartments for faculty from overseas to come to visit as visiting scholars, to give seminars, this sort of thing. And then there's one more bucket that I frankly can't remember. Do you remember what that is? So as the, as the endowment grows, there will be a greater funds flow to the schools to use in a discretionary manner, and that's, we will be able to put additional programming in place. So that was a pretty long answer to your question. I hope it addressed it. Okay. Other questions? People are beginning to leave, so that's usually a sign. So thank you all very much for coming today. I hope this was useful for you, and we'll have additional ones. Thank you.